All right, we're good now.
Okay, so let's call to order the August 10th Park and Recreation Regular Meeting. Perfect. So Scott, forgive me a second, let me get back to the agenda. All right, so we've called to order. So let's, do we have the roll call Lou, we're good? Okay, do we have any citizens comments tonight Scott?
Jessica McGuire.
Jim Kelly.
Citizens comments?
Yep, any citizens comments?
Jim Kelly, Winthrop Road. So I'm here this evening with Jesse to have an explanation and understand the parcel of land that is the playground, the tennis courts, and the basketball courts. Between the library and the cemetery on Winthrop Road. I've had nineteen different stories from residents that have lived there a lot longer than I have. But my main concern was to come forward about the lack of approved playscape equipment for under five on that playground. And the whole history of the playground equipment that was over by the library that was used by the day care that was put in in the early eighties. And how it got so bad that it probably tore most of it out. And living next door to the playground, we just constantly see children that really shouldn't be playing on it, playing with it because the parents don't have anything else, you know, any other place for them. And eventually somebody's going to get hurt. So you've got a group of children that mom says, no, you can't play, and then you have the group of children that are playing, and that may not be the safest thing for them. So I guess I'm a little surprised that the town didn't, is that equipment deteriorated over by the day care? And that when they put in that whole place, that they didn't plan for this day when that would happen. So, you know, we drive around to other towns and see what they have for the younger kids. And, you know, we've just got things that are definitely age appropriate. So I'd just like to see the town move forward, at least come up with a plan, and do something that, I brought this up to somebody in the town parking recs two years ago, and the answer was, well, you missed the budget. So I'd like to see this get listed, and I would consider it as a taxpayer's priority before somebody gets hurt and the town gets sued, you know? And heaven forbid, you don't want to see anybody get hurt over there. Coming down those slides, if you're a three-year-old, that's like a rock. You know, I mean, it really is. So anyways, that's why we're here, and we're interested to hear what the history of that piece of land is, who owns what, and what can be done going forward moving this along. Thank you.
Scott, I mean, do you have any history of that property at all? Do you have any background?
Yeah, and actually, I put together some stuff knowing that he was going to come today. It's actually the first thing under New Business. There was a lot of pictures and measurements, I actually put it into PowerPoint because I figured that was the easiest way to show it. Do we want to skip there, or do we want to go continue with the agenda and then wait till we get to new business?
Um, I would say it's not too far down the agenda. Why don't we work through the agenda as proper, and we'll address it in the new business. Dealing with the comments that were just presented, yeah?
Okay. So we don't have informational items. I don't know if you have the agenda, but I think next is approval of fire minutes.
Sorry Scott. So, call for a vote on review and approval of the June 8 meeting minutes because we did not have the July meeting. Can I have a motion?
Just need to vote, a motion in a second.
Yeah, do we have a motion from the floor?
Yep, a motion in a second, we're just, need a vote.
Oh, so can we have a vote then please? All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? We're good?
Everybody's hands raised.
Okay, perfect. All right, so that carries, we'll take those into record, and now Scott, if you can work with the director's report.
All right, um, so for athletic fields, I'm working with Mike to schedule our fall field work. We actually just received football schedules today. We're just kind of waiting for that to work in on what we're going to do and how we're going to fit in the work in pieces without disrupting the youth leagues. The fields are in good condition. We have received a lot of rain, so the grass has been growing very quickly. We'd actually been having to cut two times a week in some of the fields that are being used still. The town green public works is finished installing the parking lot lighting and the solar lights on the upper green. And they're also working on cutting the brush along the lower section as they're getting ready to put in a pocket park, which will include, I think, some benches, and then as well as a gazebo. A meeting with the new town planner on Thursday to talk about the steep grant, and then all the, you know, the projects that are going on on that property with that grant money. For garbage, we've seen a huge increase in the amount of garbage at the town green with the success of the farmer's market, and then with the food pantry being there. So I've been working with Steve Maslin, the Public Works Director, and we now have a dumpster on the property. I actually believe they're not even charging us for that on his contract because it was very convenient for them to go right in and grab that on their way to the library's dumpster. So hopefully that will, you know, help with the volume of garbage they have there. Youth leagues are all getting ready to start their fall seasons. I think today's the last day for baseball, and then everybody will be closed. Let's see, our movie nights have been going well. We're going to hold our third one, we, it's Friday, August 20th. And now that the sun's setting a little earlier, we can actually get the movie started, I think, on time. That was one of the issues early on, was the sun was setting very late, and then we didn't really take into account all the neon beer signs from the package store. So, yeah. That light pollution caused us to have to wait a little longer to start the first movie. So we did have a few people walk and leave the movie before it started, but the second one went off right on time, and actually it was a success. I think we had like forty people there for the second one, so. The horse is doing some work on town property, and they're actually looking, they met with the mayor, and actually I got pulled in because I just so happened to walk in at the same time that they were there. They're offering to do some upgrades to the parking area in front of the red barn, and then the tri-town trail access in front of Preston Park. So I think they're going to put in a gravel parking area that'll allow them to stage equipment there while they work. And then they'll actually just, you know, allow us, that parking lot will stay after they're done. That's, it'll benefit us, you know, well after they're done with their project. For the tri-town trail, they've completed all of the bridges and bog bridges that they've had approved, needed for the whole section that they have currently. And then the loop portion is actually open now as well. They're going to be holding a grand opening and a volunteer recognition event on October 3rd from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. And then summer camp is, we were successful this year, we finally finished last Friday, no major issues, which was good. And we had consistent registration numbers even with the pandemic. And I have finished doing the numbers, we broke even, and it was a very successful year. We'll have a full review with all the coordinators, you know, their letters and the financial workups for the next meeting, but they were finishing that all up yesterday. And then we have to wait for the last week payroll to get put through to have the financial numbers complete. And that's it for the director's report.
Perfect. Can I get a motion to, well, are there any comments on the director's report before we motion to accept it?
Lou, move Meredith's second.
Okay. All right, a second. All in favor of accepting the director's report? Any opposed?
All the hands are up.
Perfect, thank you Scott. All right, we can accept the director's report. And now, I believe, we are into any financial reports, Scott?
None yet, I'll probably have that next meeting. We finished fiscal year '21 yesterday, so waiting for everything to get caught up in unis. And then I should have an accurate report for next meeting.
Perfect, so nothing to vote there? Any, and it looks like we have no old business, so we'll move right on to new business then Scott.
All right, let me try and share. All right, so I put everything in the PowerPoint because it was easier. So this is regarding the community center. So I was in discussion with the Galesbury District about putting in a two- to five-year-old playscape. They ended up upgrading the tennis court and the basketball court at this point. We're still kind of discussing with them whether or not we're going to be able to put in the two-to-five playground with their help. And I've been looking at the property. We did kind of conclude that on their property, the Galesbury Community Center parcel, that it's, there really isn't enough room to put equipment and actually meet the commercial playground safety requirements because you're looking at about twenty-three feet by like a hundred and ten feet. It's just too narrow to be able to get commercial playground or equipment in there. So the next thing we're kind of looking at is at the Donahue property. So this is the property behind the community center right here, and that's the community parcel. It's kind of cut off right there, that's where it ends. So just right about there is where the tennis courts are and the basketball court, and that's the property line. This is town-owned, the other property is actually leased from the Galesbury District, which is why we've been working with them. Because anything on that property that's a big improvement needs their approval as their landlord. So I did actually go out and take some measurements. Right now, we're kind of working with a space that's about seventy-four feet by a hundred and twenty-three feet. The issue is the, because it would be a separate age group, it'll narrow down the space even more because per the safety guidelines for playgrounds, you need like a separation between different age groups. So if there's a four, five-to-ten-year-old playground, and then a two-to-five-year-old, you need a defined area in between them with shrubs or benches to allow for a separation of those two age groups. And then there's also, like a seven, it's typically a seventy-two inch use zone on the outside of all the playground equipment, which is where you see the wood chips. You know, the perimeter extending beyond the playground equipment. As a general rule, there are some equipment requirements that need more than that, but typically it's just about that six feet. So we're kind of working with a fifty by a hundred and eleven foot area that we could put in playground equipment. There is equipment that would fit that area, and there's just a few examples of it. The only thing is we'd have to fight to get out of the capital. I'm still working to see, I've been talking with Leanne to see if they might help. I know they've been discussing it. And we do have some money to trim some trees for this year. We have identified some dead trees, and if there's money left over, we could possibly use it to clear out that area even more because the tree line here does extend pretty far. I'm thinking it's about seventy-seven feet of, you know, brush and wood line here. So if we open that up, we'd have even more room if we do decide to put in a playground there. It'd be, you know, a lot, lot easier and make things more possible. Because you also need to take into account, you need, you know, room to walk around the playground. You know, can't just put it right up on the wood line because there's also use zones above the equipment as well, depending on the type of equipment that we put in. So I mean, but, so the cost, you're looking at anywhere between nine thousand to a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. The average cost of the equipment would be about fifty thousand dollars, just for like a decent-sized playground that wasn't just like a single piece of equipment. But this does not include the equipment installation or the required safety system that we'd have to put down underneath it, that would add to the cost. The size could be anywhere between a twenty-five by thirty area to sixty-five by ninety-five area. So we probably have some space, it just might be limited slightly. So I mean, the pros is we actually don't have a two-to-five-year-old age group playscape in town. I would like to see something for that age group in the future put in. And that would benefit because we do rent the community center out, and usually it's for children's birthday parties, one and two-year-olds. So having a playscape for that age group would probably be a draw for renting the community center as well. The only thing is the space could limit us on what type of equipment we can put in. And the other thing that's kind of an issue that I'm seeing as I'm taking my playground safety exams and all that, is the swing set, it would be located in the middle of the two playground structures, which is a big no-no. The swing sets should be at the very edge of all the equipment. So it's currently right, you know, right in the middle, and if we put equipment there, ideally the playground, the swing set would have to get moved to the outskirts. So we would have, you know, the four, or two-to-five-year-old playscape, and the swings would need to be located somewhere on the perimeter. And that's a liability issue because they don't want the kids running back and forth and getting hit by someone swinging, running between the two playspaces. I know, like, this is kind of the issue. I've been dealing with Leanne at the Galesbury District. Our plan was to put it on that little section, but when we met out there, we took, you know, measurements, and it wasn't, wasn't enough. And that's, I know why we're taking that furniture out, because I think it was built before they had playground safety standards. So at this point, like, we can't utilize that space, you know, with the modern requirements. Yeah, so I think it was probably in the nineties, like, between ninety and ninety-five that they implemented the national, like, playground safety requirements for public playgrounds. So that's kind of our limit for putting it on the Galesbury Community Center property. Because that was one of the ideas with improvements that just happened, because it did just do the basketball and the tennis court over. So now we're kind of back to square one and looking at the Donahue property as a possibility. So I mean, by trimming the trees, we might open up some space, but that would be, need to come out of the capital budget. I did look, there is some funding through Game Time where they'll possibly do a match. So I could apply for that if we do decide to put it into the capital project plan in the, you know, the coming years, wherever we decide to put it in. And it just depends on how much conveyance tax we're getting each year, and then the priority, because I think this next year we'll probably want to do the roof at Judge Crandall. That's probably our highest priority, just because it's in rough shape. And then we'd have to see where the playscape, if we decide to do that, would fit.
Yes, Scott, we would have to revisit that priority because I think we had two or three key priorities coming, and you're right, Crandall was at the top of the list. I do not recall, what was number two and three though?
It might be, I think it's more Ruth's, Holdridge, Jane Perry Pavilion, and then I think Demaria are all due for replacements. And then also, we need, looking at the current playgrounds, we do need to make sure that the safety servicing for the playgrounds we already do have get upgraded because the wood chips are getting compacted, and we need to maintain, I believe it's like two inches of non-compacted wood chips to meet the safety standards. But that, I mean, that's a big cost, but not, not as big as like putting a new playground in. It's kind of manageable, depends on how much we get done. This year, I think we can put in, I think, two playgrounds we can get wood chips in because it's part of the site improvements for Highlands Lake and then Christie Hill. So that would knock two playgrounds off the list that would need new safety servicing.
And I know later in the agenda, we have the proposal for re, just top dressing instead of sod, so I'd like to understand if there's any savings there that could be applied in what we had already planned.
So Scott, how long does it take to plan and then implement something like this? Like, what's the timeline for the playscape?
I mean, well, for the money, we're at least next July, because if we put it in the capital plan for next year, the money wouldn't be available until July 1st of 2022. I mean, then after that, it could go fairly quickly depending on the avenue we take. We probably want the company to put the playground equipment in because it doesn't void any warranties rather than have Paul install it. And I think that's what we did, or Don did, with the previous equipment, just to make sure that it was covered under warranty in case anything happened. They didn't say it was an installation error.
And then with, with grants, usually we have to use the money at certain times, so if we did use grant money, we would have to pay the money. But also, I have another question about the, the playscape that's on the community center property. We don't have any liability on the playscape.
So we, that's why we're taking it down because we do, because in the lease, we essentially take, like, ownership of the property on what happens on it and maintaining, you know, general maintenance of the property. We would just need permission to get, you know, if we were going to put in large improvements to the property in the lease. Most of it's down. There's some of it that, actually Russell has some volunteers, he said, in the next week or two might be able to get the rest of it down with the saws off. But what's left is like cemented into the ground and pretty substantial, so yeah. But he has it wrapped up with like snow fencing. I think people keep taking it down, but we're, you know, deterring them from using it. But I mean, the swing set, if you look at the, literally the bar bends down. So we don't feel comfortable putting swings on that, this doesn't look structurally sound.
Okay, so Scott, do we need to then at this point make a motion to put it into the capital plan? Or do we need to put it on the next agenda for evaluation against the other priorities? I don't know that we're ready for a motion yet. I think, at least for me, and it's hard to hear all the comments around the table, I mean, certainly that young age group needs something, so we should certainly look at that. But for me, I think there's, there's more information that we need to have before we motion, but I welcome thoughts from others.
Yep, and actually, I think we have some additional questions.
So Jim Kelly again, just some, just some thoughts. We wanted to see an interesting playscape for kids this age, go down to Niantic to the hole in the wall, and go up to the right towards their tennis courts and playscape. They have, it's almost like a pyramid that's age-appropriate. It's got a much, less of an incline for the rock climb, and the slides are much more age-appropriate. It doesn't have a huge footprint, so so when I saw that, I was thinking, wow, that would look fit so well, and then if they put three or four of those COVID horses with the springs that you can just put your child on. So just, I just wanted to point out a couple of things about the map. One of the things, even if that piece of the property by the tennis courts had been viable, the parents run into the problem of they have an older child on the big playscape and a younger child on the smaller playscape, and they can't keep an eye on both of them. And that's, that's a challenge. It usually results in one child being dragged along to the, to the other's playscape with that. The, if you go back to that map. So the first year we were in town, that green section got used very little. I have to tell you, this year, that has gotten used a lot more by families, kicking balls, throwing footballs, exercising, just doing different things with that. I'm wondering if you can't, if you, where the wood line is directly back towards the library, right in there. I wonder if you've got into that and if there's room there to do something. Even though that's real close to my house and it'd be noisier, I just wonder if that's, if that's, if that's viable, you know, and do something there. So I, I guess the question that, that what you folks have to decide upon is, are you going for a big playscape? Are you just going for an age-appropriate add-on so the five and under have something to play on? I didn't realize that there's no equipment in town for, for under five. So, on hand, I can see the need having the whole crawl through and all of that versus that pyramid that I was talking about. So that's a decision that, that somebody will have to make as far as that goes. The, I'd mentioned when I talked with you on the phone, and thank you, we had a great conversation. What's, what are these towns doing with all their COVID money? What a great way to spend some of that to get kids out of the house and on the playgrounds. I know, you know, I've, of some towns that have taken some of their COVID money and done that. So, yeah, you've got some decisions tonight. Part of me says, go for the less expensive route, something like that pyramid, and, and that's a whole lot better than what they have now. You know, and maybe, maybe there's another playscape in town where you can eventually go and put in a playscape that's the same footprint as the, as the new one that's there now. But I, I would hope to see this move forward in a timely fashion because you have so many children under five in this town. They're over there all the time playing, and, you know, it's kind of like Field of Dreams, if you build it, they will come. Do we want more kids playing next to us? Yep, but there'd be more, they come from all over town.
We kind of knew what we were getting. That's my flagrant right there.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think any of us would sit and just hate the fact that, you know, making this happen quickly would be important for that particular age group. And you're right, there is, there's a growing number in that, that age bracket. I think it's just for us as a commission, we've got to look at it in context of some of the other things that are going on and get the answers that we need. I think the suggestions you put forward around, around just looking at that, that particular back line there, and we've got some, I think, thinking to do really to, to make that all come together. But some great points, appreciate the, the comments. And just Scott, looking to any other commission members, any thoughts at this point, or?
Just to clarify.
Do we leave it in your hands to get?
I think there is, I don't think there's no two-to-five-year-old playscapes, there's no two-to-five-year-old playscapes under Park and Recs jurisdiction. I believe there's one at Gallup Hill School. They, I think they have two separate playscapes. They, I think they have two separate playscapes and one, I believe, is for that age group when they did the remodel, now that I've.
Well, it's a good clarification, Scott. I think you're right.
Gales Endominas found a big billion dollars to COVID. I mean, they're right down the road.
Would be nice.
How about, how about we, how about we put up toll booths next, next to a battery?
Yeah, I'd definitely have to look at, that's a good idea, the left corner, because that would also eliminate the need to move the swing set. Because the swing set would still be towards the outside of the play equipment. And maintain the open space.
And you, you could, if you wanted to, I don't know if you want to keep the, some of the tree line along the cemetery wall. You, you could trim back that portion that if you head up towards the basketball court that it just keeps experiencing out. You could definitely trim some of that back and pick up some, some additional play over there. And also, so, I mean, I, they're overplaying tennis with usually the same people. Some of them are over there. But the back. Well, that, that gentleman, I believe, he used to be the coach of the coast guard. And he was from Tewksbury, St. George. But the basketball court was a ton of use. And it was so good that you did both of those courts now because we were at the point where another winter, the cracks may have been so big that we would have been, been hard cropping instead of just being sealed. The one thing I am puzzled about though, that they didn't straighten out the posts on the tennis court before they did that job. That made no sense.
So they, that was the, the Gales Ferry District made those improvements. And I did see that they, I guess they got a really good deal on it. They had, they used it as a training. So they just had to pay for the supplies. And that's one of the first things I kind of brought up to Leanne. I was like, yeah, but they didn't fix the posts that are heaving, which you would want to fix when you're resurfacing. It's, they could still be fixed, but it, it would have made sense to do, yeah.
For that gentleman from the coast guard, Kevin, we were talking about that. He was explaining to me that you just don't put a post in, but you actually put a sleeve in. And that gets anchored into the ground. And then you put the post in so that the post isn't pulling against hard cropped dirt, it's pulling against that sleeve. And it's very difficult for it to go in. And then the other thing, he said, you know, he didn't know if they would do it there was to actually put a center post in to hold that net up and, and take some of the weight off. He definitely knows about tennis courts. And yes, the district did get a good deal because I've been voting to get the tennis courts going out, make the power be safe. And I would like to get that deal back. And that also, from my research, that would let companies go with ways to make the best material.
Yeah, they definitely did a good job on the courts. And there's the pickleball lines now too.
Yeah, and the, and the basketball court, he's, they can't treat you like that, but they play out. Thank you very much.
No, I appreciate you raising it and, and, you know, reminding us that there is this importance that we need to keep looking at. And obviously, Scott, I think we do need to probably just revisit that capital list anyway. So let's make sure we get that on the agenda for next month.
Yep.
Okay. So I do not believe we have a motion to make on that topic, other than to carry some of the additional information to next month. So we'll move on to the high school turf field and the impact it has on our field. So just to set the landscape, I think we all know that the new turf field is being actively used, not just now by the high school teams, but we've seen clubs like some football and actually the soccer clubs starting to host games on the field. I think the question that surfaced for today's agenda was, what does that mean for fields and usage? And our sort of maintenance of the existing fields like Belander, Depta, Clark, Crandall, et cetera. And off the top of my head, I don't actually know if Ken had any direct comments, Scott, to add to this when he surfaced it. But I think it's just an open floor discussion for, do we need to do anything right now? Do we need to change what we're doing on the existing maintenance or do we need to watch? So I'm welcome to comments or thoughts from around the table.
So see, I did reach out. I haven't, I didn't get any input from football, but I did talk to Will, the president of soccer. And he, I asked him the question just to get his input and he's, basically the impact it'll have is that the turf is not available during the fall because of high school soccer and football. And then because of the school athletics get precedent over the town sports and they get bumped. They were able to use it during the summer months. We are seeing now though, for the end of the summer season, they have gotten bumped off of the turf field and they're back to using Depta. And he, he's assuming the spring is going to be the same with the crossing track. So they'll probably get bumped and not be able to use it in the spring as well. So basically, he said, field usage would be the same, but they benefit because now they don't have to compete with the high school soccer team for practicing and playing on Depta. So it opens them up to having a lot more.
Yeah. I would say Depta is the one that's probably the most impacted and I agree with him. I think the, having seen the schedules, and I actually got a preview of this year's schedule for high school. And it's, it's pretty intense, so I do not think there is a fair amount of, of spare time. If it's not for games, it is for practice for all the teams. So, yeah, I think his assessment's right, to be honest, Scott.
Yeah, especially because it'd be in multi-sport.
Yeah. And it's going to be very much used in the spring too. It's going to be the same situation with dual across and, and the track. So, yeah. Okay. So Depta really is the impact. It's, it's probably not going to get as much wear and tear. And I have to say, I was down there again last week and it's, it's the best it's ever looked. I think some of that is just attributed to the wet summer that we've had, but just the fact that the goal boxes look solid and things like that is a, a good thing. So have we gone as far as talking to our maintenance and lawn guys about suggestions for changing things with how we deal with Depta? Because I think really that's the only field that's going to see some relief, yeah?
Yeah, and actually that's the next item on the agenda. This is actually coming directly for Mike. Because I know we had in capital to re-sod Depta, but we've put a lot of work and the field's looking great. The one thing is, it's, it's kind of bumpy. So he recommends that we top dress this fall in, in lieu of re-sodding. He actually has a top dresser, a machine that will spread the loom evenly. And then he has the proper draggers with the weight to actually get the dirt to work into the soil. And he's thinking about doing that late fall. So he said he would go multiple directions with both the dragger and the top dressing spreader. And then he wanted to do a dormant seeding where that, that he thinks would see good results in the spring. So it would even out all those low spots. He would get the dirt all worked in. You know, where it's really bumpy and even the field out so it's nice and flat. And then the dormant seeding, he said, we should see a good amount of grass come up in the, in the springtime. Because he would put the seed in, like, aerate first, I believe, to get the seed down deep. And that way, when the temperatures come back up, the seed would sprout.
Okay.
Our turf manager.
Is that any change in cost or incremental to the contract as written, Scott?
Um, so it would be in, in addition to the contract, to do the top dressing, we'd have to pay for like the loam and all that. But he would, you know, would some of the contract work kind of coincide it with that to make sure he gets the best results?
I would anticipate that's well south of the cost to sod though.
I would think so. I haven't discussed actual numbers yet. He was just kind of, you know, throwing it out as that would be a better alternative to sodding. But I'm assuming it would be much cheaper because you're not tearing up the entire field. And even if you're going to re-sod, you would still have to put down, you know, new, you basically have to top rest the field before you put the sod down. Essentially, you're saving the money on sod, but using the dirt that you would put down anyways.
Okay. So without the cost differential, I don't think we can motion on it, can we? Or can we motion that you will, yeah?
I talked to Marsha and she said like, we wouldn't have to go, you know, back to finance because essentially it's the same project, the same result, but just a different way of coming to it. And it's still the field improvement that we put in for. I just wanted to get everybody's thoughts first.
I had something, Jim Kelly. A couple of years ago, Three Rivers up at the college, their big lawn that they used for graduation was just a total mess. It had huge spaces in between pumps of grass. And we had Salem lawns come in and they did a great job and it was a lot less money than I thought it would be. And it was hugely less than doing turf. And I was really surprised how well it popped back. He came back and did multiple feedings and the seeding and, and he did the initial, put the topsoil back down again and spread it. And it came out to be a beautiful piece of lawn. They redid the irrigation system and, and it really, I, I did not think it was possible. But he swore that the grass would come back and it would push out the weeds and that's exactly what it did.
Yeah, perfect. Thanks. Any, any thoughts around the table, Scott? Otherwise, commission members?
I was just wondering how it would impact the schedule and whether the fields would close and it will be after all of the sports are done.
So I got to kind of verify with Mike, but the sound of it is he wants to wait till the fall to do it so it won't impact the field usage. Right now, he's going to plan the fall work, the aeration and the overseeding around, you know, the field usage as far as, you know, doing the work. But it won't really affect play because he's like putting seed down with a seed slicer. So it's literally just puncturing it into the ground. It's not tearing anything up. On the aeration, it might cause a day or two of disruption, but.
I was thinking actually more, would it cause, with the dirt itself coming in and being balanced out? Because if the, the club in particular is successful, as it has been in years past, some of those cup games will go quite late. So we probably should just check with Will. Because I know playing on the grass, the grass dirt sort of combo is pretty rough on those guys.
Which I think that's why Mike's looking to do this on the back end, the very end of the season when they're done. And with the dormant seeding versus when, you know, doing it now before the overseed. Because then you would, you know, have, you know, kind of a muddy dirt situation with play. So once the, the league's done, he could go out and top dress. And then put the seed down to come up in the spring versus doing it now to have it come, come up in the fall and then be, you know, already established for the spring.
Okay. So do you need a motion, Scott?
I don't believe so because Marsha said we didn't need to, you know, pick it up to finance or, you know, I just kind of wanted to discuss it before we go forward with kind of changing our original plan of re-sodding.
Okay. Any other new business then?
Nothing here.
I did have something. I just wanted, my friend who couldn't be here, she was going to ask you about how to, if it was possible to use some of the town-owned property for a pollinator pathways program. They do it in, so, I think. It can be together with the beautification committee. Just wanted to get information, how to make that happen. The pollinator pathways program. Just looking for like, if it was possible and how that would, how that would work.
What, what does it entail?
So it's planting specific plants that bring bees and other pollinators. It's like a nature project. So I don't know if there's some town-owned property, like, like a little corner or like different, you know, different properties. It can be like a planter here and a planter there, or I don't know how much space it would require. But I didn't know if that's something that is possible or not.
So I would, Scott, off the top of my head, I think we've got obviously ourselves somehow possibly involved. I agree. I think the beautification committee is also something. And if I'm not mistaken, the new, is it Farm and Agriculture Committee? May, I don't. I'm trying to remember what that new committee's scope is, but it might be something.
I mean, it could be, it could be a common, I mean, something like this could cut beautification, conservation, the gardening club.
Know how to do this better than any of the others too.
Yeah. Yeah. I, I like that, Lou. That's probably where I'd start would be our, our local garden club.
But I think I was just looking for whether it would be possible to put it on any Parks and Rec property.
Yeah, I would need permission from the commission. One place comes to mind though, and I don't know if they're already starting this, so the Tri-Town Trail, that property across from Preston Park, I believe there, I've heard discussions about something with pollinators. I know that field's kind of, has a lot of pollinators there and they've talked about, you know, planting, you know, specific plants for that. But that, I think that property is under the town council jurisdiction, so it probably needs their permission. I can ask the Tri-Town Trail and see what they're planning because I know they're big on trying to, you know, implement pollinators along the trail.
Yeah, when I saw Karen on the call, I was like, oh, and then she's not on it anymore. I was hoping she was going to stick around for that.
But I agree, Scott. I mean, for something on any of our properties, if there was an ideal location, we would just, there would have to be the proposal of what they want to plant, where they want to plant it, just to the commission itself. And we would endorse it or vote on it, right? So I think that's, from my perspective, as simple as it is.
Yep. Yeah, and then because the trails, technically the trail's under our jurisdiction, but the property's under the administrative control of the councils, we probably just want to make sure to get their permission to use that property versus Parks and Rec property.
Okay, sounds great.
Any other new business? Okay. With that, then I will call the meeting to close at, I've got 7:54, Scott. Motion to, do we need the motion to adjourn? I think we do, right? A motion and a second? All right, all in favor of adjourned?
All right.
Perfect. Excellent. Thank you, everyone, for a August meeting. It's rare we hold August, but since we skipped July, I think it's a good one. So look forward to face-to-face in September.
Yep.
All right, thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
All right, bye, everyone. All right. Bye, everyone.